So today, we're just gonna go over, it's kinda just gonna be a study session today, we don't really have a chapter to go over. So I'm just gonna kind of run through the contract a little bit, The Wonderful Family and kind of just, if I wanna say something about one of the other contracts, I'll just kinda bring it up as we get to it. Besides from that, I'm just gonna kinda run through some bullet points of some stuff that I might have not covered that I kind of thought about later, or some stuff that I did cover that I just kinda wanna make sure y'all know, uh, cause it might be a little important. So, um, one thing you remember about the contracts is that, uh, three things that are every contract, uh, it's kinda like, we call them like the three Ps of a contract, is the parties, the property, and the price. So those can be the first three, the parties, the property, and the price. Those are in every contract, um, there is other stuff that's in every contract, but that's kinda like, that's what we like to say as far as the required elements for our contract is parties, property, and price. How we said that you have to use these forms. If your buyer, uh, wants to just write it down on something and give it to you, or if the, uh, seller wants to write it down on a piece of paper and just hand it to you and use that contract instead, you're technically allowed to if they require it, however, kind of the three things they have to have on there anyway, is the parties, the property, and the price. Uh, they don't have to put in about leases if they don't have anything, even though it's in every contract. You know, they, they can't just say, "My house will be sold for this much," cause what is the house who is it going to? You have to put in, "My house at blank is being sold to this person for this much." So that's the three things you at least, or we require, is the parties, the property, and the price. In paragraph two here, um, again, this is the property and this includes all the improvements and accessories, and I remember this is everything that is permanently installed and built in. And then also the accessories, same sort of thing, that's gonna have stuff that's built in, so window shades, draperies, rods, door keys, uh, mailbox keys, stuff like that, that's important that you can't really take with you. You can't take the door keys with you, you can't take the mailbox keys, uh, those are stuff that you have to be at the house, or have to be left at the house, sorry. But it's not gonna be anything portable, uh, that's not required, so if they have like a, a microwave, that's not required. Um, I don't mean my wife or getting a portable dishwasher. Uh, we don't have a spot in our house for a dishwasher, but you can kinda put in a portable dishwasher. That would technically be personal property, cause we're not like installing it into the, into the house where it can't be moved, it's just a little portable thing you could plug in and use and take out, so stuff like that, that would not be considered, or that's not part of this property section, cause this is the stuff that is uh, referred to as like the real property. So, anything portable, that doesn't count here, it's just the stuff that's kinda permanently installed. Uh, number three, so we have the, the sales price, and we all know that there's the cash, uh, down payment, and then the addendums, or the, the financing and then the sale price. Now remember, these are the three things that you will need an addendum for, so if you're doing either seller financing, loan assumption, or third-party financing, you're gonna need an addenda attached to the contract as well, you can't just have, uh, you can't just put third-party financing and then just leave it blank. You have to then have an addenda that's attached that has the specif- specifications of that third-party financing. Same with loan assumptions and seller financing. Like I did say before, you might not know all that off the top, uh, if you're doing the loan assumption, you might not know what they're paying when you put this offer in, you might not know what the seller is paying uh, in their mortgage, so you don't really know what you need to put down in the loan assumption addendum. However, uh, you will have to attach an addendum and let them fill it out, or at least do this, send it over, let them give you the information, and then attach the addendum afterwards, but you will need that addendum in there at some point. Also with the cash portion of the thing, this is where your earnest money goes to, so if you're doing earnest money or option money, uh, down, and that's gonna, I mean, that will count towards your closing costs. What it goes to first is your down payment, so if we put in here that we're doing fifty thousand dollars in down payment and two fifty in financing or whatever to make three hundred thousand dollars, you do not have to put, uh, if you put thirty five hundred dollar in earnest money, that counts towards your down payment, so instead of fifty thousand, it'd be fifty six five hundred. That, that's where that stuff counts towards, is towards that price, or towards the down payment, not to like the interest rates, or not to the interest or the, the mortgage rate and like that, it goes towards the down payment first. Alright. Yeah, and, um, with these addendums, if you were doing something that is usually around, I think a third-party financing addendum would be, uh, or not third-party financing, sorry, conventional financing, that'd be about eighty percent of a, that's around what the conventional loan is, is you, you get a mortgage of eighty percent, you put down twenty. That would be around what a third-party financing would, would be used for, it's around eighty percent. That would be conventional, I know VA loans, there's no down payment, and FHA loans, you can do as low as three and a half percent down payment. All of those, you would use this third-party financing addendum, cause that is a third-party finance you're getting it from, you're not getting it from the seller and you're not assuming their loan. So any sort of, um, fixed-rate loan is going to be through third-party financing. Um, you can get it from seller financing, but that's again, it's up in the air, it's not gonna be around a certain number. For third-party financing, it's always around eighty percent, is kinda what you're looking at. Seller financing, they can kinda choose how much you're getting loaned for, it's usually not gonna be as much. I remember our hypothetical, we did, like, they were putting, they put down seventy-three thousand and they got twenty-five thousand in a loan, that's usually what happens with seller financing, is you're gonna put down more like more than half and kinda get the other, you know, if you can't make up the full amount in cash, you might get a little bit seller financing. You're not usually gonna see, you know, twenty percent down, eighty percent financing in a seller financing, you'll usually see about, you know, it's like ten, it's like twenty, thirty percent in financing, is usually what comes out with seller financing. Um, and if you remember again with the third-party financing, the cap on the interest rate is just whatever, um, I know I talked about this the other day, but the cap on the interest rate is gonna be whatever's the buyer is willing to pay that's available for the market. Um, that's available in the market, you can't just throw out numbers, it's not gonna be like eleven percent or something like that, it's gonna be a rate the buyer will pay, um, that's kinda like available in that, in the market at the time. Uh, let's see, paragraph five, so earnest money, termination option. If you remember, we talked about this at the very beginning, earnest money, uh, how we talked about it's not, it's not considered consideration, uh, it's just showing your serious intent, you don't have to put down earnest money. I've done transactions where they put no earnest money down, you don't have to do it, it just shows serious intent. I've also done stuff where I just did a transaction with kind of a smaller piece of land, but where they did two hundred and fifty dollars in earnest money and then didn't do any option money, because they're kinda two fifty, they were taking that, where if they went after through the transaction, they had to back out, they're only losing two fifty, cause that's, that was one percent of the sale price, so like, what does it really matter? There's no reason to put another hundred down for an option period, by the way, it's not an option, then you lose two fifty, you take back out instead of the one hundred. So, um, earnest money and termination option, or option money, those are not required, they're not like, um, required, like, pieces of a contract. Uh, they just show serious intent, which is helpful and you would use them a lot, I, you will not, you will hardly ever see a contract that does not have earnest money or option money, but they're not required as far as elements of the contract. And again, the money you put here, or, sorry, here, that's the stuff that'll go towards your down payment, as opposed to, you know, the, if, if they want a certain money back in expenses or something like that, if you have to, I think it was in paragraph twelve where we have the sell and other expenses, if you put five thousand dollars here, that the seller's willing to pay you, and then you have thirty-five hundred here, it's not like you're gonna get eight thousand or eighty-five hundred back, and then you kinda figure out what to do with it, it's gonna go towards your down payment. Yes, so if, if you do not get a seller's disclosure, um, remember this is kind of, we like to always do this initially, before we accept an offer, that way you don't get these extra seven days to back out. If they do not receive, or, you have within blank days, the buyer, the seller has to deliver this notice to the buyer, sorry. And then whenever they receive it, they have seven days after they received the notice to back out. That's again, if you don't have a seller's disclosure and somebody asks for no option period, they ask for five days here, they're technically gonna get seven days of option period from whenever they receive the contract, or receive the seller's disclosure, sorry. And if you don't perceive it ever, um, then they are allowed to terminate the contract at any point up to closing. So this is very key, that if you have a seller's disclosure, or, it's very key that if they request one, you give it to them, cause if you don't give them a seller's disclosure, they're allowed to back out at any time, uh, prior to closing. Yeah, if buyers not receive the notice, buyer returns contract and kind of prior to closing and earnest money, we refund it to the buyer. Oh, quick thing here, um, so again, except for the property as-is, we like to always check the first box, cause again, you don't wanna like miss out on a contract, cause you said yes, but I want you to, in the hypothetical, we have like fix the four windows and replace the broken garbage disposal and stuff like that, that's something the inspector would also find, so you can just ask for that when your inspection comes back and they say, you know, we have these repairs that we would like to get fixed before the property, before we purchase the property. I would usually put that there, not in this blank, just cause, you know, people are reading the contract and going, "I don't wanna do all that stuff," and then just not even looking at how much you're offering like that, because you have some of the repairs you need finished. Um, and then if you do give it to a lender and they require repairs, unless otherwise agreed in writing, neither party is obligated to pay for lender-required repairs. That's very key, a lot of people think it's, some people think it's the seller, cause it's their house, if the, if the lender requests it, they should have to do it, some people think it's the buyer, because it's their lender that's requiring it, so they should have to fix it. It is neither party, you get to kinda negotiate, it's neither party gets to do it, so you have to figure it out, um. This usually includes the treatment of wood destroying insects, that's actually, you'll see that a lot if there are wood destroying insects, that's like one of the, that's a very key thing that a lender was not getting along at that point. If there are wood destroying insects, a lender will say, "Nope, sorry." Um, you're either not getting a loan, or they better fix that quickly and very, very efficiently, they can't just cover it up, they better fix it, fix it, and we'll go back and check again, and at that point, you might be able to qualify for it, but that's just like a big no-no for them with wood destroying insects. But again, neither party is required to fix it, uh, or required to pay to fix it. Oh, for residential leases, so, um, or just for leases in general, uh, so, fixed leases are gonna cover leases over items or fixtures in the property, so if you have a lease on a security system or a water softener or anything like that, solar panels, that'll have to be conveyed and you'll have an addenda that'll actually transfer ownership of that lease to the buyer, or at least notify them of the lease that's currently happening. Same with a natural resource lease, you kinda need to disclose that to the buyer, they don't move in, and then realize after they moved in that, uh, there's an oil vein under your property and there's a company that owns it, so they're gonna be out there every other day drilling, and they didn't realize that was the case or something like that. Um, that's a very drastic, um, example, but you don't want that coming up, so that's why you have to acknowledge those. Uh, residential leases, those will be such as the buyer's temporary lease and the seller's temporary lease. That comes down to, and they're temporary, so you can't, the, they only last three months, or ninety days, I think it's ninety days is like specifically what they use, um, not so much quite a month, but you can't stay, if you're staying longer than ninety days, you actually have to get a real lease, and you can get a short-term lease, that's like month to month or something like that, but you can't use a temporary lease in that situation. Also, if you remember, the temporary leases are the ones that are, um, you have to pay them upfront, so you have to pay the full price of your, if there's a security deposit, however many months, if you're paying three months of rent, let's say you're doing the full ninety days, security deposit and three months rent, that will all have to be paid upfront at closing, if you're the seller and you're moving in afterwards, uh, or you're staying in the property after closing, and for a buyer, it's used if you're moving in early. So you'll, you won't usually see it for full like three months, um, but it just can't go more than ninety days in good direction. Again, usually closing is thirty days, so what you'll see this probably the most, I believe, would be if you have a buyer who is trying to sell a house and buy a house, and you know, they put both days on certain dates that they're gonna sell and buy on the fifteenth, let's say, but then the sale of their transaction, or their house goes really quickly. They end up selling on the tenth, but they can't purchase the next house until, let's say the twentieth, so one guy moved forward two days, one guy moved back two days. The buyer can then get a temporary lease at their property they're purchasing, since they have nowhere to go right now. They can get a temporary lease for ten days if the seller allows it, and they can move in for it. However, at that point, you still, if you have a temporary lease, the seller becomes a landlord technically, and the buyer becomes a tenant, so you have those qualifications, but that doesn't mean if you move in early, you technically like own the house early, cause you have possession of it, so you can start painting and moving things or whatever, you still don't own the property. Um, just cause you moved in, you're basically moving in like you would if you was a rental property and you moved in, um, for example, I live in a rental property right now, I can't just go painting everything and tearing the walls down or whatever, cause I don't own the building. Same situation, you don't own the property, you can move in, you can move some furniture in, you can, you know, whatever, but you're not allowed to like disrupt the property. I don't think it's in here, but, um, think I'm going through all these. Uh, if you remember in the new home construction contracts, they did talk about, uh, the R value of insulation, that was referring to, in new homes, they're putting insulation at the time, so you have to actually give them information on what the R value is, or resistance value of that insulation. And that could be said, same thing, I know Aiden was talking about, he had a client, that was, that's all he talked about when it came to windows, was like the R value of the windows and the R value of this and that, and that's just the resistance to like either the heat or the cold, um, and how insulated the property is. Yeah, brokers and sellers have a disclosure if you are related or you are closely connected to somebody that you were doing the transaction for and you're the agent for them. You have to disclose it in this paragraph, and this also states out that the broker's fees are contained in a separate agreement, and we talked about that was the buyer's representation agreement and the listing agreement, that is not gonna be in this contract, even though, um, right down here, you would put in your percentage, three percent or whatever, this actually doesn't count. This doesn't mean anything if there's already a previous thing in the MLS, or another agreement, if you have a separate agreement between the brokers, and then for the selling agent, or not the selling agent, since the buyers are presented or whatever, but the listing agent, that, their percentage is calculated in the listing agreement, so the listing broker has agreed to pay the other broker a fee of blank. That's because the listing broker, um, will get a percentage in their listing agreement, and then on the MLS, that's where you can find out, if you were a buying agent, you could find out how much they're gonna pay you basically. But this doesn't technically change anything, I know I said I had a, uh, agent that one time tried to change this up on me, and I was like, "That doesn't really count, cause" and we had me an MLS that it said this, but then again, there was that one time Justin Denver, cause he wasn't paying, he didn't record what the MLS said, so they put something different here and then changed it on the MLS right afterwards, and then he didn't really have a way to look back at it. Yeah, so closing, um, if you remember with the backup contracts, uh, you can't have more than one backup contractor, that's very key, you can only accept one, or else you're basically entitled to sell your house, once this current one falls through, you're able to sell your house, like three people have a contract that then is activated, so you only have one backup contract. Or else, even if you did it in order, that's like pushing the last guy out like six months away, so that's why they only allow one backup contract at a time. And for a closing date, um, if that's what you put as the termination date in the backup contract addendum, so let's say that we have a property that'll close on this, uh, so thirtieth now, let's say the tenth. If that property does not close by the tenth, then the contract we have, uh, is terminated, so therefore we don't have, we're not stuck in this backup contract for any longer, but if they close on the fifth, or they terminated on the fifth, the new effective date of my backup contract becomes that date, whatever day I was notified about. If it's like April second, I put it in, and then, uh, let's say April second, the previous people started a contract, I put mine in April sixth, and then the previous contract was terminated on the ninth, my new effective date becomes the ninth, instead of the sixth, so that's just something to remember, is that they kind of, your, your effective date does not go off that, because you still have to pay earnest and option and all that sort of stuff. Uh, and you have your, let's say you put ten days for option period, that way if they close ten days after you put your initial offer in for a backup, you don't wanna lose your entire option period, because you know, if that was technically when somebody else was in the contract with you, it changes to become that day, so you have your option period from then on to do your due diligence at that point. For possession, again, we probably always, you're probably most of the time put upon closing and funding, but again, you can't put according to a temporary lease, uh, promulgated by Trek, and or another written lease required by the parties, that's where you would see that no more than three months out, either before or after that the new buyers will retain possession. Uh, smart devices, so a smart device means a device that is connected to the internet to enable remote use, monitoring, or management of the property, items identified in a non-realty addendum, or items in a fixture lease assigned, fixture lease assigned to the buyer. So if the seller has any smart devices that control anything that is technically in the property, or items identified in a non-realty items addendum, or items in a fixture lease, so the reason it has this items identified by any non-realty item addendum, if you decided that you wanna put a non-realty item in, addendum in to keep their fridge, and they have some sort of smart device that controls their fridge, let's say, they can't then take the device that controls that, because that's staying with you, so the device that controls it also has to stay with you. If it's a, um, if it's like a phone, and you have, you know, you have an app that controls your thermostats or whatever, you don't have to leave them your phone, that, I know when this came out, um, on the new contract, there's a lot of people who were like upset, cause they thought that they had to give away their phone or whatever, you just have to give them access to that stuff, so if it's a device that can be connected, you know, you can disconnect it, reconnect it, then you have to disconnect it from your device and connect it to the, their device. If it's an account, it's all under and you cannot change the account, which is very unlikely, because people now know that this stuff can change property, so it's not gonna be something that's stuck, um, to like your internet account, let's say, or your Google account or whatever, but if it was, if you had an app that you had an account for, that device is under, you basically have to give them either the username, password, or whatever, to give them access to that account. Um, a lot of times, if that's your client, you'll just tell them, change it to something really simple, just change it, your, your username to something simple, and change your password to one, two, three, four, five, give them access to it, that way they can go in and change it to their own unique thing, and then you just kinda move on, that way you're not giving them a few, I know we're all supposed to have different passwords for everything, nobody does that, um, everybody uses the same, like, two, maybe three passwords for everything in their life, so you don't wanna give them one of those passwords, because you have to give them access to a smart device, um, so that's just key there. For special provisions, insert only factual statements and business details, you can talk about business details and you can talk about factual statements. You cannot get legal advice, you cannot put anything in special provisions that talks about, uh, that is in an addendum, you can't say you wanna keep the fridge and this and that, because there is a non-realty item addendum for that, so you cannot like put that stuff in special provisions, you can only put factual statements or business details. The only time that you can put something different is like I said, if you're doing something like, what's, what special provisions is used mostly for is for situations where like the legal description is too long, or what you wanna put in a certain paragraph is too long, so you put, refer to paragraph eleven and then put that stuff in there. That way you just get a little bit more room to type stuff out, cause it's, it's a bigger blank, um, but you're not gonna put anything in here, um, that gives anybody certain rights, or you're not gonna say, uh, be, be warned, there's, there's a possibility of lead-based paint in the property, cause it's built before nineteen seventy-eight. You're not gonna say that here, because there's an addenda you literally attach and send to somebody that has that exact information in, so you're not gonna put anything that's in an addenda right here. Another thing you're not allowed to do, so you can talk about factual statements and business details, you are not supposed to talk about like the title itself, or the legality, or where the title is at in the process or whatever, that, that's not your job. Um, that would be the title company or attorney. The broker's not gonna know about it, nobody's gonna know about it except for an attorney, if they ask for one. If they want opinions on title, that would be something like they would get an attorney for, um, that is not your job, and it's nobody in this office's job, it's not gonna be Justin's, we don't know any of that stuff, that's not for us to know, that's, that's an attorney or a title company. Remember, you have to check off the boxes for the, uh, for the addendum, you can't just leave them blank, if you leave them blank, they are not, they're not notified as part of a contract in a court of law. So if I was to not click the third-party financing addendum, or the addendum for a backup contract, um, or something like that, if I don't put in, let's see, addendum for concerning rights to terminate due lender's appraisal, if I didn't click this box here, and then the appraisal came back and said it was less than what it is, let's say we thought it was a three hundred and fifty thousand dollar house, the appraisal said it was three hundred thousand, the lender is not gonna approve the funds for three fifty, cause that's not what my house is worth. So he's not gonna approve those funds, if I don't click this box, we no longer have the right to terminate the contract because of that. Um, so that's something you really, really want here, if you have it, because then your, your client has the right to get out of the contract, um, even though, you know, if they said they wanna do it because of the appraisal, you have to click the box, even if you attach the document to it, if you don't click the box, they don't look at it, or they don't read it, so that's very key here. Um, twenty-three, it's the same in every contract, just what the attorneys are, um, trying to think of this, anyway, yeah, like I said before, uh, paragraph two is actually the only one that's gonna be different in every contract, um, three's gonna be the same every time, the leases, again, they will be different, you have some that don't have residential, um, if it's just unapproved property, you're not gonna have a residential lease prop, you know, and if it's not, if it's a condo, you're not gonna have natural resource leases, but there are a lot that are similar, the, uh, for example, The Wonderful Family and the New Home and the Farm and Ranch are all gonna look just like this, so, uh, the New Home, I think, are all gonna look exactly like this, so that's something, you know, these all look the same, paragraph two is the only one that's completely different in all of them. And I did wanna bring this up just to remind y'all, if y'all want to change anything, the best way to change a contract is to use an amendment. You're not gonna write a letter to title, or write a letter to the seller or whatever, saying, "Hey, we changed this." You have to use an amendment, and what this does is take promulgated form that will, um, yeah, it's a promulgated form that basically has all the things you would change. Um, and then also just other one here, insert only factual statements and business details. This again would be if you decided that, hey, we're gonna be out of town, can you leave the keys blank? That's something you'd put in this one, but you're not gonna, again, you're not gonna change their legal rights or whatever in this box here. If you wanna change the closing date, just check that and change the closing date, that's a paragraph nine, this is the closing. And so, that's the best way to change a contract, is gotta be using an amendment, cause you have to, you have to have it, you have to have an executed date, and then you have the buyer and seller sign it. You can't just write a letter, cause then, what if the other party didn't get it? They probably didn't agree to it, if you just wrote a letter and sent it to title, it's not sure if they agreed, did anything, so this would be the best way to do it. Alright. Does anybody have any questions so far? So make sure everybody's good. Kinda following through this a little quickly, but that's okay, no big deal. Alright, cool, um, for these offers, again, this is an offer, I know this is a Wonderful Family contract, we don't have like an offer contract, we just have this. One way to terminate a contract is to rescind it, um, that's kinda One way to terminate a contract is to rescind it. Um, that's kind of the one people always forget is that you can just rescind the contract. That would be used if you were a minor, let's say, and you wanted to just say, by the way, contract's void and you, that's kind of just you terminating it because it's voidable. Mostly what you'll see with, like, rescinding a contract is. If I was to offer a contract and then anytime, like kind of prior to the seller, the seller accepting it and notifying me. Because again, that's when the contract is accepted, is when they've accepted it and they've notified me that you accepted it. I can send an offer to Aiden for his house for great, a thousand dollars. And before I hear back from him, I can just send an email and say, hey, by the way, not anymore, J K, well, um. That, you know, I'm rescinding that contract. I'd like him to send my offer for that property. That could happen. You won't see that a whole lot, but if you have a client that likes to just jump on things, they might just jump on it and then be like, oh. I didn't want it. Or, jump on it and then go, oh, that was actually, I paid way too much in that offer or something like that. Um, another way you'll see that is if you as an agent in the state and typed out the bond number. You put in an offer for three million dollars on a three hundred thousand dollar house. You'll probably be messaging them being like, hey, I'd like to take that back now, please. Um, so that's another way you can do it before you accept it. Uh, let's see, there is no. Trying to think of how to word this, what I'm thinking. Um. A wonderful family contract would be used to purchase a house, uh, and fee simple. So. You'd use that for a townhouse, or for a wonderful family, like single-family house that we think of, like just a normal house. So townhouses and normal houses, like, I didn't say normal houses, you know what I mean? We'll use a wonderful family contract. Everything else we use, or condos will use a condo contract. Apartments will most likely use a condo contract. Um, however. That is what you would use to purchase a house and have fee simple title to it. I know we talked about fee simple title before, but basically that's just you have full ownership. You're not, um. You might have a mortgage on it, but you still have full ownership of the property. You're not like co-owning it with somebody or anything like that. Fee simple just means it's your property. But there's promulgated forms of that. That'd be what the wonderful family is. Um. Let's see, third-party financing addendums will, will be a promulgated form for like conventional loans, FHA loans, VA loans, stuff like that. Um, there's seller financing. And loan assumption, that will all be like promulgated forms. All the stuff we've gone through has been promulgated. Um. But, there are other ways to purchase a house. Um, I know my dad did a purchase of a house using a contract for deed where basically he just. Put a contract in to request the deed to a property and they just kind of switched. They gave them the deed to the property, kind of like, hey, what a car in a way, like you can just receive the title of the car, the deed of the car or whatever. Um, that's not a promulgated form. That's just requesting to. A contract for deed is kind of just a form you'd use to, basically, it's not as promulgated, it's not as extensive. Instead of eleven pages, it's very short and it's just kind of like a. Can I have the deed and get here and you go? It's very quick. So it's not a promulgated format for it. Um, but yeah, any of the stuff we've covered, that will all be promulgated for. Uh, these. There are two statutes that we talk about in this class and you'll probably hear in every class. The statute of frauds, it basically says that everything needs to be in writing to be enforceable. Um, and it has to be signed, in writing and signed by, by the parties to be enforceable. Um, and the statute of limitations, we talked about, which is, basically you get a certain amount of time after an offer or after. Something has been done to be able to sue for it. So how we talked about, you can sue for specific performance or for, um. Damages, stuff like that. There is a statute of limitations for that. That statute of limitations is four years for everything in writing. So if you have a statute of frauds, everything's to be in writing, you have a contract that's in writing. You have a statute of limitations of four years for that contract because, um, that is the statute of limitations for anything in writing. What that means is that. If Aiden puts a bid on my house, he puts an offer in. I accept it. We go through contract and then he tries to back out and disappear or whatever, and I want to sue him. If this happened today, I can sue him on April twenty-ninth of twenty twenty-five and it still happened. So I can sue him for specific performance in four years from now. And he would still have to purchase, I can sue him for specific performance and they can purchase my house in four years. So. That is why the limitation, it seems super long and I feel like it is because of that, but you also want to be able to cover your ground if you miss anything. You know, you want to make sure you have the ability to go back and do that. It's four years for anything in writing and it's two years for anything, any sort of oral contract. That's also very important. Um, people think it's four for everything, but it's actually four for anything in writing. It's for everything in writing is four years and it's two years for anything like, any sort of oral contract that you have. Uh, do you remember there are six contracts that are promulgated by TREC? Um. Pull this over here. So, this is the addendum to contract. So that's what I was just looking at a second ago. Um, but you do have the carbon ranch, the two new homes, the wonderful family, the condominium contract, and the unapproved property. So you do have six. Um, contracts that are promulgated by TREC. And then, now that I can watch, I'll pull this up. Okay, okay. There are also, um, I know I brought this up in class, but there are two resale certificates. That's a question I remember saying on my real estate exam, so I just thought I'd bring that up to you. But basically there are two resale certificates promulgated. That's the condominium resale. And the subdivision information including resale certificate, property subject to, blah, blah, blah. This is the one, if you remember, that the, um, the member of the HOA will fill out, somebody from the HOA will fill out, whether it's like the president of the HOA or whoever. They'll fill this one out to kind of give you the information on how much, kind of clarify the information of how much you're paying and how much, what you get, what amenities there are and stuff like that. Um, what our rules are for living. That'll all be in this, uh, resale certificate here. And then condominium resale certificate, that is the same thing, only instead of by somebody from the HOA, that's from somebody. From like the complex, like the condo complex. Somebody who owns like the, I think it's still called like a property. Owners Association or something like that. The Owners Association of the condo, um, that will tell you basically what the fees are as far as. If you have to pay for maintenance fees, be paid for community areas, stuff like that. It's the same sort of thing. The resale certificate that somebody. A third party will fill out to kind of let you know what fees and stuff like that you're getting into with the property you're purchasing. Real quick, just about contracts in general, um. If you think about what a contract is, a contract is just, um. A promise for a promise. So that's really all a contract is, is just somebody promising somebody to somebody else and then promising something in return. You can't have unilateral contracts, which would just be, I promised Aiden something and that's it. And we just have a contract that I will do the thing. Um. That is what option periods and something that are, if you have an option to terminate, that's something the buyer gets for those, let's say, ten days. The buyer is not promising anything in that situation, but the seller is promising that they have X amount of days to terminate from their option period. Um, you might think it's bilateral because they're promising to allow you to terminate and. The buyer is promising to pay them the option money, but technically by paying the option money, you're creating that contract. So at that point, you're not promised to do anything. You've already paid. So that is why it's a unilateral contract. Um. Same with an option to purchase. The seller is basically promising to sell you your home, but you have an option to purchase it. That's kind of what a, um. An option to purchase is, that's from the buyer as well. They have the option to purchase it or not. But the seller is promising to have, to sell their house to them if it comes down to it. So. Oh, I guess for all these contracts in general, um. All of the contracts are promulgated by TREC. So TREC promulgates them. TREC makes sure they kind of organize them and they. Promulgating is basically this, they accept them to be used and be legal documents. However, it's the broker lawyer committee that writes the contract. So, uh. The author of all these contracts is the broker lawyer committee. TREC just kind of promulgates them. And then TRALA is the act that enforces them. They basically enforce all the licensing rules and everything like that. So, um. The broker lawyer committee offers all the contracts, TREC promulgates them, and then TRALA enforces them. That's really confusing, but. You will see those a lot. The reason I'm saying that is I, you will see those acronyms on your real estate test. Um, the only one they will probably write out is the broker lawyer committee. Everything else will be TRALA or TREC. Um, they don't really put like TVLC or whatever. It's usually spelled out broker lawyer committee. But, um. Yeah, so broker lawyer committee writes them, TREC promulgates them. As far as offers on a contract go, um. Like I said, you can only have one backup offer accepted. You do however have to. Give the seller all the backup offers. You have to give them. Every offer that comes through has to be given to them at a reason, at reasonable time. So again, if you get one at eight P M., you can wait till the next day. If you know they go to work. From nine to five and you get one at nine A M., you can wait till five to give it to them. Did you ever offer, that's a reasonable thing to do. You don't have to send it to them immediately. However, if the seller has requested that you. Don't send them certain types of offers, um. Then you don't have to give them those offers, I guess. If, if they say, I don't want anything thirty thousand dollars less than what I'm asking for. Then if you get something of thirty thousand dollars less, you don't have to show them that offer. Um. You have to give them all offers that are made to them, uh, before they've accepted an offer. Once they've accepted an offer, you're not going to show them any more offers. But, every offer that comes through before they've accepted it, you have to show them that. Don't attract me, thanks. Okay, with the survey, um. If you have a survey done, this is one of the things that a. Buyer might not receive beforehand, even if there's a survey done on the property, with the seller's disclosure, like I said, in the. Kind of forms section of the N L S, they might have like, the, um. The seller's disclosure in that little like attached document section in the N L S, you won't often see a survey there. There might be one there, but usually there's not. And you have to kind of, you'll have to request those. That's why there's not really a spot for like, we've received it. Um. So basically, within blank number of days, the seller will furnish the buyer the seller's existing survey of the property, um. And a residential real property affidavit promulgated by the Texas Department of Insurance, the T forty-seven. This is not promulgated by TREC. This is T forty-seven. This is promulgated by the Texas Department of Insurance. All a T forty-seven is, is kind of. It shows what's different than the survey. Alright, that I know?
Yeah, it pretty much says that the seller, since the last survey that they were, they've received nothing new.
Nothing, nothing new has changed. Yeah. Um. And again, you don't have to change anything if you get something that's temporary. Um, me and. My wife at our house, we just got a like seven foot by seven foot like temporary shed that we put, um, from Home Depot, just like a little. Plastic Tupperware rubber made shed. Um. We don't have to disclose that because we can just tear it down, move it. If we were to put a concrete slab in and put the shed on top of that. Even though the shed might not be permanent, the slab is permanent. So we have to then get a new survey done to kind of record where that slab is in the ground. Um, so basically a T forty-seven would just kind of guarantee that like. We have not done anything since the survey I'm showing you now. We have not done anything that has changed what's on the survey. Where we haven't put in a pool that now they'll have to come out and re-survey. Exactly what the survey says, that's still correct, um, to our property. So, that is what that's for. Um, if the survey is not acceptable to the buyer's lender, the buyer shall attend a new survey at Blank's expense, no later than three days prior to closing date. So three days before closing. Um, this is not a certain person. It's negotiable in the contract. It's usually the buyer, um. Just because it's their lender that's not accepting it. So, the seller's like, well, I gave you mine. I did my work. Like, you're the, it's your guy that's not accepting it. So you have to pay for it. So it's usually the buyer. But it's not always the buyer. It's just, it's, it's whoever's negotiated in the contract, not one or the other. And again, as a buyer's agent, I'll probably click seller and send it over to the seller. And if. They don't want to fix it, cool. If it's not accepted, then I can just go get a new survey on the buyer's behalf and have the seller pay for it. Cool. But, um, that's why it's kind of negotiable. But it usually will come back saying the buyer, even though it's a negotiable thing. Uh, the title commitment has to be within twenty days after the title commitment or receives a copy of the contract. That's also kind of key because I have seen things where like. I accept an offer, Aiden accepts it, everybody accepts it. You know, Aiden sent me an offer, I accept the offer. I tell him we've accepted it, but it's eight P M. We can't really send it to title now. So. The twenty days after the title company receives a copy of the contract, that's kind of what happens. Within twenty days after receiving it. It's not necessarily after the executed date because, again, if we put the, if I accept it to notify him, that becomes the executed date, even if the title company's closed on a Saturday or whatever. It's twenty days from when they receive it, not from the executed date of the contract. This blank year for title policy will ninety-five percent of the time be the same as this blank year for the option and earnest money. And remember, this is when three days the effective date. So even if that day is a Saturday, let's say, or let's say it's a Friday. Let's say you filled it out today. It's six thirty. Or six twenty-five, whatever. We filled it out, um. We can't send this to title yet because they're closed and it's a weekend. So they're not going to be open till Monday. However, um. This is technically the start of the effective date. That does not include, if it ends on a Saturday, Sunday, or legal holiday, it moves to the next day. But it is three calendar days, so that doesn't include weekends. Um, if we filled it out today. You actually technically have Friday, uh, or I guess you have Saturday will be one day, Sunday will be two days, Monday will be three days. It'd be due on Monday. Um, you would not count as business days and say, well, Saturday, Sunday don't count, so Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday is due on Wednesday. It's technically due on Monday. Because that is three days from today. Um, also, with this title policy, um. It's at the seller, the buyer or seller's expense. Again, most things are usually negotiable about that, about who pays for what. Um, but like I said before, the title policy will be the same, it costs the same throughout the state. You'll have people who will change the title company because they worked with them before and they really like them. I know here, we really like university title, but that's because they're always willing to come in and do lectures with us or, um, we've had. Paige, a really nice woman who works at University Title, come in and like do monthly meetings and kind of explain stuff to us a lot. And so we really like the title company because they're just so personal and so nice. Um. I wouldn't change, if a contract came in that said Aggie land, I wouldn't like change it. Um. But you will get some people that really like one title company over the other. And so they will, if you put one person, they might request. Well, actually, I want to use Paige at University Title because I really like her. I know she'll do really good work. I've used her a lot, whatever. Um. That is like a negotiable thing, but the policy is not going to change the price. Because if you remember, the policy is the same throughout the entire state. So whether you did it in Aggie land or at University Title, it's going to be the same price, the same cost for a title policy. Um. That also goes for different counties. You can't really change the county of the title company because. If it's in Bryan College Station, you're going to have to use Brazos County, somewhere in Brazos County for the title policy. So it's going to be within Brazos County. But if I didn't want here, I didn't want in Galveston, I didn't want in Dallas, and I didn't want in downtown Houston. Um, all the policies are going to cost the same. Because they're the same throughout the entire state. All the policies are gonna cost the same, cause they're the same throughout the entire state. Yeah, so, um, according to the kind of like preset writing of a deed, I just wanted to make sure that was correct. That's what I remember from my real estate test too, was that. The preset writing on a Wonderful Family contract. Says that it's gonna be a general warranty deed. It doesn't have to be, if you remember, you can use a special warranty or a quit claim or bargain sale or whatever. But the, the writing suggests it's gonna be a general warranty. If it's gonna be something different, that's, you have to let title know that we don't have a general warranty deed, we'll be getting you a special warranty deed. Basically saying, if you remember, general warranty says, there's been nothing on the property for the entire time of the property. Special warranty says there's been nothing, like no liens or anything put on the property. Since I've owned the property, so if I've owned it for four years, nothing has come on it for four years. Quit claim and bargain and sale are just kind of like. I'll help deal with it, um, that might be, that might not be, I'm not gonna say nothing. You don't really wanna deal with those, um. Ever. General warranty is the best. That is why it's kind of in the. Preset writing here, also, it's the one. That's most common. You will mostly see a general warranty deed because most people have it. Uh, it's just like a title for a car, most people have a clear title for a car, most cars have a clear title. You do have some that are reclaimed titles, you have some that are refurbished titles, whatever, but. For the most part, you have a clear title, in the same way, for the most part, you have a general warranty deed. That's kind of why it's in the kind of, the black pre-printed language that we can't change, because it's what usually happens, that it's the best one. Well, yeah, I guess earnest money, uh, remember that you can't. You can't accept earnest money and sue for something else, um, if you've accepted earnest money. That's your like repayment of damages. You can't accept the earnest money and then also sue them for a specific apartment or for damages or stuff like that. Uh, because you accepting the earnest money is kind of your payback for it. Even though earnest money not cover what happened, I, you know, you might have a situation where somebody put up two hundred fifty dollars in earnest money. Cause a lot of damages, you could sue them for forty thousand dollars, but you've already accepted the two fifty earnest. Therefore, you can't sue them for the rest of it. Which is why, as an agent. We like to just sue, or we like, we like, we like to sue, we like to just send over the. A letter of release of earnest money and stuff like that, as soon as, as soon as something happens, if somebody's gonna terminate a contract. If Aiden, if I'm Aiden's agent and he wants the back out of a contract fifteen days in, and we only got a seven day option period. He kind of can't at that point without releasing his earnest money. Or they'll sue him, so if he wants to terminate, I'm gonna send over a notice of termination along with a release of earnest money. And just hope that. The seller, like, the seller's agent will just get it, send it over, let the seller sign it, and we're good to go. While he might have lost that two thousand dollars or however much it was. That's a lot cheaper than, than suing him and making him purchase the house. Or suing him and making him, or suing him for damages, and there's all these, you know, different things they can sue for for that, so. Again, if they accept earnest money, I just try to send it over as quickly as possible, cause if they accept earnest money, they can't do anything else. I guess a paragraph two, um. With the other contracts. If there is improvements in accessories, it's always gonna be. Like how I said permanently installed, that goes for everything, um, even in the farm and ranch, there's like. There's not just improvements, it has residential improvements and farm and ranch improvements. It still goes with the same thing, that they are all permanently installed things, you're not gonna have. Like you'll have stuff like, I think the thing that'll be different on the rest, or the farm and ranch improvements, is you'll have stuff like barns or. Pins or stuff like that, you're not gonna have. More equipment that is still movable, you're not gonna have a tractor, you're not gonna have. The yard equipment, you're not gonna have the irrigation systems, you're not gonna have the actual animals, you'll just have like fences and barns and stuff like that. Cause again, that is all stuff that's permanently installed. So, that's what's there. With the. Mineral rights and kind of like mineral leases and stuff like that. As far as mineral leases go and mineral rights, that's gonna be stuff underground. So you're gonna have like oil, gas, propane, stuff like that, you're not gonna see. Like water, there is like a lease, like you can get a natural resource lease. For oil, gas, mineral, water, wind, other stuff like that, so you can get a lease, like a natural resource lease for water, but it's not technically a mineral lease. Or a mineral right, you don't get water and wind as mineral rights, cause that's not stuff underground. You're also not gonna see stuff on the surface, you're not gonna see dirt, you're not gonna see gravel, um. Asphalt, sand, stuff like that, that is stuff on the surface, not under the surface. Even though you could argue that like, well, the top layer of dirt is dirt, is surface, but then under that, it's all minerals. You're not gonna see that in like a mineral. Mineral estate, as far as like, you know, what you would get in like a, a reservation of minerals. Um, you would just get. Oil and natural gases and stuff like that. If you are using a power of attorney. To transfer a property. Um, I understand this, cause we're actually going this right now with my dad's, my dad passed away, we, he has a lot of property. But like my brother is power of attorney, and so. Uh, sorry, my brother says, uh. What is it called? I can't remember, he has an attorney, that's a good friend of ours, that's his power of attorney. He can technically transfer the property for us, and we're doing that kind of currently at the moment, because. He has some rental properties that we might not wanna deal with right now, so we'd like to sell them, but. He can't sign the paperwork, even though he's the owner, because he's not around anymore, so we have to have his power of attorney sell the property for him. That is allowed, um, you don't have to have like. Another attorney at the closing table to like make sure everything goes okay, you don't have to have, it doesn't have to go through like a court system or anything like that. All you basically need is like a document from the power of attorney. That says what they're doing and says like the legal description of the property, cause again, since there. It's harder to find out what they're talking about if you don't have, my dad can say it's the selling. Uh, one, two, three main street, that's easier because. If you just look at my dad's name, you'll find out what one, two, three main street is, um, cause you'll. You'll look at what he owns, that's labeled as one, two, three main street, but again, with a legal description, it has to be very specific, and so a power attorney. You would definitely need that to make sure that, since that could be anything, cause you don't know who he's the power attorney for. Um, you will need that legal description, that's why they require a legal description in the contracts, just cause. Just cause I put Jim. Here, if Jim's actually a power attorney for somebody else, I can't just look at Jim's name and then the address of one, two, three main street. Because. That might not be. It might not be Jim, I might be looking up a different Jim in a different city, that another one, two, three main street. When really, this is a Jim who's working for another guy, uh, like Tom or Aiden or whatever. Cause Aiden knows one, two, three main street, and he, Jim's his power attorney, so that's why you would need. That's why they request a legal description in these contracts, just to clarify that a little bit. Oh, I guess with this. If this. Is what your. Paragraph three looks like. When you're fully done with the contract, just two hundred fifty, two hundred fifty. Cause you're banking or whatever, and you got that money just to throw out there from your checking account, cause you're a G. You don't need any addenda, that's kind of a one situation where like, you can do an entire transaction with no addenda. Is if you don't have any sort of financing, you're literally just paying cash for a property, this is also the only time that you can do house flipping. How we said flipping was like a source of fraud, that's because. Most lenders require a certain time to live in a property, if I'm just paying two hundred fifty thousand dollars for a house and I'm paying in cash. Let's say I'm paying a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for a house and I'm paying in cash. I could pay that cash and then a month later sell it for three hundred thousand if I fix it up and that's fine. That's allowed, because there's nobody requiring that I stay in that property for a certain kind of time. That's why it's not always fraud, and that's why you could have shows that talk about house flipping, is because you technically can do it. You just have to get special privileges. You have paid cash, or you actually get special privileges from lenders. A lot of times the shows that do house flipping, they might get loans for it, but they know. Their lender knows that this is what they do for a job, and they know they're gonna get their money back, even if they're losing out on this, they're gonna get another sale in a month, and they do it again, stuff like that. That's just a very special situation. But yeah, if you're doing this stuff, closing like this with just straight cash, there's no addendas that you need attached to the property, so that's very, very nice. Oh, you remember the federal housing laws, that's one thing that we talked about in kind of a later class. Looking at my slides here. That covers. Kind of the, the most, it covers what you'd think. Sex, race. Uh, ethnicity, gender, stuff like that. But one of the things people always forget is that it covers familial status, I know Justin talks about that a lot, because. Again, it's one of the most missed things, and that's something you'll probably see on a real estate exam, because it's something a lot of people miss. But it covers if you have kids or not, basically, um, same with, that's what a HUD disclosure is typically for. The Housing and Urban Development Disclosure covers you if you have children, that way you don't have. You don't have a situation where like people don't want you because you have a four-year-old, and they don't want to do a four-year-old. If you're buying a property and you're qualified, you're allowed to get that property. Weirdly enough, it does not discriminate against age or like sexual orientation. That is something that is not in it yet, basically I'm assuming it will be at some point, um, but that's not something they're kind of protecting at the time. But, kind of the newest ones is disabilities and. Familial status or if you have children on, basically. Objections, this is a negotiable time, amount of time, you know, I usually say days, you can put in twenty if you want, or whatever. And this is where we usually put in residential rental use. But if you remember the other day, this is where we also put in. They wanna be able to put a pool in, and they wanna be able to, uh, park their RV in our driveway. That's basically saying that if there's anything. That it covers the title or prohibit the following use or activity. So you can put that, an activity you want to do, is put in the pool. If that is not allowed, there is some sort of. What's that for, Aiden? Can't do the name of it now, people like don't allow mobile homes. Um, my mind is blank on it, but. If there's anything kind of preventing you from like having mobile homes, or putting this on a property or whatever. You put that in objections, that way if it comes back saying, oh, actually. There are no mobile homes allowed, or, oh no, you can't put a pool in here, or whatever. You basically have this amount of days from receiving that notice to back out of the contract, so. Now that's what goes in objections there. Residential service contracts, um, I know I talked about this yesterday, and you might see something like this. In your real estate exam, but basically. The buyer is the one purchasing. A residential service contract or a home warranty, you might see called. They'll probably put residential service contract on the test, cause that's like technically what it is. But it might be easier to think of as home warranties, cause that's like kind of what it's generally known as, if we have it on like. We have home warranty forms, you only have residential service contract forms, or like, you know, pamphlets or whatever. It is the buyer that's purchasing it, um, people think it might be the seller, cause if I put in here. Seven hundred dollars, it's not the seller buying a residential service contract for me for seven hundred dollars, it's the seller. Reimbursing me seven hundred dollars, so I can go purchase a home warranty, basically. So, just because this, the money that's in this blank comes out of the seller's side. That's just a reimbursement, and it's your, it's the buyer's job to go buy a residential service contract or a home warranty, cause they're living in a home, but the warranty's not even, so that's what that's for. Oh, paragons. You okay, Aiden?
Yes.
Uh, paragons, remember that this. The Wonderful Family is one of the contracts that does not deal with rollback taxes. I believe it's the Wonderful Family and the Conventant contract, don't deal with rollback taxes, because. If you're buying a Wonderful Family residential contract, it's already residential. So you're buying it residentially, whereas if you're buying a farm and ranch or unimproved property or whatever. It might have been agricultural, you're buying it and turning it into a residential property. That's, you're changing the zoning on that, um, same with new homes, the reason new homes are included is because, even though. When you're purchasing it, it's a residential thing, a new home could have just been built and three days ago, it was not residential, it was agricultural. So that's why rollback taxes are included in that as well, in the new homes, just to cover that. So it's the new homes, the farm and ranch, and the unimproved property, those have rollback taxes, the, uh, Wonderful Family and the Conventant do not have rollback taxes. Also, Aiden.
Yes.
Think fast, what can you never disclose to somebody? I said this the other day.
The homeowner had AIDS.
Yes, correct.
Or HIV, or HIV, same thing.
Yeah, same thing, but, um. Yeah, you cannot disclose if somebody has had AIDS, or if, um, somebody has passed away due to AIDS. That's not something you can disclose, it's just best to not. I was talking to Justin about this, like you can disclose if there's been a suicide, if it, if they allow you to, you can. If you're representing somebody, you have to disclose that, stuff like that, you kind of have to disclose. You cannot disclose if there was a death due to AIDS, you can disclose if you want, but the property's haunted. If you, I mean, if you feel like it, and you wanna tell people that like, oh, by the way, this place has been haunted for fifty years. Um, according to this, this, and this, you can, um, that's permitted. But. Even if somebody tells you, you're allowed to tell people that there was death due to AIDS, or that this person had AIDS, you can't. No matter what they say, it's just like, you can't do that, it's against the law, and it's a, it's part of a. Um, fair housing clause, so you're not allowed to do that. And I know Ms. Vida asked the other day about. If there was. A murder, that kind of goes the same with suicide, you can, if you want to, you don't have to, and then also, we were talking about. Oh, uh, how you can't talk about if. Or you can't refuse people based on. Race or whatever. race or whatever, um, or gender, you can't, you know, like we talked about if a certain person really doesn't like a certain type of people, like they don't like um, Hispanics or black people or whatever, you can't. If they don't want to show them the property, you can't allow them to basically say, well, I don't want anybody of this type coming in my house. You can't allow that, but I, or Vida was bringing up a good point on if it's a ex-criminal or something like that, can you, can you reject them because of that, and to be honest, you wouldn't know. There's no real reason you would find that out beforehand, um. A lot of times with clients, I will get, like, for example, if I'm asking to do a showing at somebody's property. I will text the agent or call the agent and say, hey, I have a client that's really interested in your property at one two three Main Street. Can we set up a showing for Saturday at noon? And if they say, cool, then we go, there is no, I don't tell them like, hey, I have a client, that's name is this and they work for this company or whatever, or they you know, they just got out of prison and they wanna go look at, like, you don't disclose that to people, you just, you just tell them you have a client, um. That also keeps you in the clear of like, if you were to tell people like, I have an Asian client or whatever, that can come off as you being you automatically discriminating against them because you're having to disclose that their, their race to people, which you don't need to do. Um, so it can kind of come off as like treating people weirdly, um, and discriminating against them. So especially just to not disclose it, so if it was an ex-criminal or whatever, you probably would know that at the time, um. And it's not kind of your place, again, that comes back to slander, how we talked about the, um. If somebody was, uh, they were part of a sexual harassment, whatever. You might be able to find that out, but you're not, even though technically you're on, you're permitted to disclose that to people. We request that you don't just because, um, if it's incorrect, you don't wanna slander somebody's name. Uh, Aiden goes, I'm talking bad about me, saying that I'm a uh, sexual, I was a sexual harasser and I'm a molester or whatever, and I'm on all these lists. But then it comes back that they just got the wrong guy and it's not me, but I can come back at Aiden for defaming me and for defamation of character. And then it comes off very poorly on the agent, Aiden in that case, so. That's why it's best, even though it's allowed, just tell them, there's plenty of databases, go look it up, go look at yourself, um, you wouldn't know that stuff. Oh, another thing, the property has nothing to do with financial approval. I know a lot of people think that, I know I talked about it a little bit earlier, but like going off of the, um, what's it called, the, uh, the appraisal and how like if a lender does not approve of a property, they can require certain repairs, whatever. That does not technically change your financing approval or your financial approval, that changes like the home approval. Um, your financial approval, basically, they receive your like credit statements and your assets and your income, they look at all that sort of stuff. And then just find out if it's satisfactory or not. Um, but it has nothing to do with the home itself, it has nothing to do with the property you're purchasing. The financial approval just matters if you qualify for a certain amount of money. Um, that's what financing approval is, whereas getting approval for a specific loan on a specific property, that might come back to what is the property condition, so. Aiden, you remember where the notices are, what co- what paragraph that's on? Field property. So close, yeah, um. So if you remember, there's only twenty-three paragraphs, twenty-three is always gonna be the attorney. Um, twenty-two is where you put in all the addendums, so the last three are actually, or not last three, the attorney is one. I wouldn't say a super key, you probably won't be asked about that, but as far as where the agreement of, or the, uh, the addendums is, that's always gonna be in twenty-two and twenty-one is always gonna be the notices. I remember both, those were my real estate test, people bringing up which one is the, like, where you have to check the boxes for the addendums, that's the twenty-two. And twenty-one, it lets you know where all these notices are gonna be sent to, um, but yeah, that's very key. Can y'all remember just in general, this, these contracts, you will never sign, um. You will put your name in notices eighty percent. Okay, okay, I'll put that. Sorry, you might put your name here in the notices saying, um, I want this stuff be sent to me, instead of my client, they considered a client through me or care of me. However, you were never gonna sign the contract, this is not a contract that finds you to anything. A purchase contract, which is what Wonderful Family, apartment ranch, those are considered purchase contracts, um. All of the purchase contracts are gonna be a bilateral agreement between the buyer and the seller, um, so that's not gonna deal with the agent or anything, that's just a bilateral agreement between the buyer and the seller themselves. Your agreements, your signatures and your contracts come through in the buyer's representation and the seller, or the listing agreement, the seller's listing agreement, um. That is what's gonna deal with the agents and then the purchase contract, the agents are just spilling it out on behalf of the, of the clients and the buyer and seller, and they're kind of the ones in the party. Um, they're the ones in the contract and the bilateral agreement. And anything not, um. And if you remember bilateral, basically making a promise or a promise, in a purchase contract, it's basically, one's promising to buy. I promise to pay you this much money for your house, and the other person is promising to sell their house. I promise to not accept any more offers and accept your house. If everything goes hurts, and, uh, sell you my house if everything goes correctly, basically, um, that is what this agreement is. Oh, I guess that's one adult check, okay, so, um. As far as the policy and survey go, if you remember, there are basically all of these things, um, that are gonna be subjects to probably get exclusions, uh, and the following ex- exceptions, so these are all the exceptions to the title policy. With the commitment, like I said, it is twenty days and, um. Seller shall furnish to buyer a commitment of the title insurance, that is why usually the commitment is paid by the seller. And then the buyer, um, at the buyer's expense, legible copies of restrictive covenants and documents. Uh, evidence, exhibits, exceptions in the commitment, other than the standard printed exceptions, that's all at the buyer's expense, so. And the buyer will pay for like the restrictive covenants and documents, basically, but the commitment itself in the policy, the policy is determined by either, it's usually gonna be the seller, but it is a negotiable thing, the commitment is the seller, um, within twenty days. Um, with other types of sales, remember you can do a, um, like a short sale, that's one of the other things that we talked about, that's not, um. That wouldn't change this contract, basically, um, as far as the buyer's side, you're not really involved in a short sale, you're just putting an offer on a house, that's kind of dealing with the seller. Um, but again, that is if the seller is trying to sell their house for less than what they owe on a mortgage. If they owe two hundred and eighty thousand dollars, cause they had a three hundred thousand dollar mortgage, they're trying to sell the house now, but it's only worth two fifty, they're offered two fifty for it. They have to basically get that approved by the lender, so it's the seller's lender that has to approve whether the short sale will go through or not. Yeah, then finally that too, um. Nothing in the contracts deals with mineral rights, that's not something you put in a contract, that's what you put in the addenda, um. So like a farm and ranch contract, even though it deals with a lot of land and something like that, unapproved property, it deals with land, only land. You would think they put something in about mineral rights, whatever, but it's really not, in this case, it just, that would go in an addenda, um. You get more stuff like props and equipment, like I said, and like the leases and everything, but you wouldn't really get, um, and then also like, you know, who owns it, stuff like that, um. But you wouldn't really get, um, actual mineral rights, that would be stuff you put in that addenda for oil, gas and whatever. That's where all of your preservation of mineral rights and something like that goes, is in that addenda, that's about oil, gas and other mineral rights. I see, but anything else? Uh, I guess if the property is or is not in a homeowners association, I'm gonna think about it, um. If y'all remember, we talked about this during our addendums, I think it was, um. That is stuff that comes from these, the title company, it's their job to find the subdivision information, um. I just did a contract recently where we sold some of a bit of land and that's kind of out in the middle of nowhere, and it came back to subdivision and I went dude, like, could have been, cause on the CAD it had like a name, so I was like, I guess it's, and it was like something Homes number four, like that was the subdivision name, so I was like, okay, so I just put that in. But as far as like information about the subdivision, um. That all comes back to the title company. It's not your job to find any information like that out, your job is to fill out a contract, it helps them go through their process of doing inspections and getting an appraisal done and getting a survey done, all that sort of stuff, but you're not the one searching for information, um. It's not your job, it's not you title searches, so you're not gonna find out certain information about the property and all that sort of stuff and then subdivision and everything like that. That's how the title is done, your job is just to make sure everything went smoothly as far as the, um, due diligence of your party goes, so the inspection and all that sort of stuff, and then make sure the contract is correct and forth. Trying to think if there's anything else I can think of to go over. Oh, for the lead-based painting, now that I think about it, remember that it's before nineteen seventy-eight, and I've said that a whole lot, but that's cause you'll get multiple questions on the real estate exam, I know everybody I talked to has had it, um, that's before nineteen seventy-eight, so anytime they'll ask you if it's January third or December fifth or whatever, it's just before nineteen seventy-eight, so December thirty-first, nineteen seventy-seven, that's when you have to that's like the, the last day you would have had to disclose lead-based paint. And then also within reaching, it says in the, the addendum, that if they receive notice about it, they have fourteen days to back out of the contract, so, um, that's just something else that like, remember that that is a thing you have to fill out if it's before nineteen seventy-eight, because it does give your buyer extra fourteen days to back out if that stuff comes up, so it actually is really important. You don't wanna miss it just because you're thinking, well, they probably, I can just tell them about it, I don't have to put the addendum in there. Just cause you can tell them about it, doesn't mean that they won't get the extra days to back out and everything, so it's nice to, to have them actually know that they get those fourteen days extra. I thought about that, cause I was talking about the, um, the broker's fees and how that's listed and everything else, it's like it's not in the, in the contract itself. It is however, weirdly enough, in the farm and ranch contract. I don't know why, um. Cause I was thinking about that, cause I just did a farm and ranch contract and I remember being like, I had to put all these boxes and stuff like that, it didn't just say three percent. That's because for some reason it actually is in the farm and ranch contract, um, that upon closing, the seller, the buyer of the property, um. The blank will pay listing principal broker cash fee of blank or blank percent of total sales price and the seller buyer will pay the other broker cash fee of blank or blank percent of total sales price. Seller buyer authorizes and directs escrow agent to pay the brokers from the proceedings at closing. I don't know why that's in this contract and no other one, I've never quite understood that, um. But that is in here for some reason, so every other one, it says, this is a percentage you can put in, but you don't have to, cause it's in the, it's in somewhere else. But for some reason the farm and ranch, it makes you put it again and it's actually binding in the farm and ranch contract, I don't know why, um, it's just this one contract that has it, so, um. I found that weird, but. Yeah, and here's what I was saying about the farm and ranch improvements and the farm and ranch accessories versus just residential accessories. So like the improvements, that's gonna deal with, um, pens, fences, gates, barns, tanks, windmills, like the, the big stuff that's permanently installed, not just, um, like irrigation equipment, fuel tanks, submersible pumps, pressure tanks, stuff like that, it's gonna be like big stuff that's permanently installed in the property. Are you ever allowed to get legal advice? No, if somebody asks you if you wanna get legal advice, just tell them to talk to an attorney, um, it's kind of the easiest thing to, to get them back, what? There's no reason you should ever do it, and like I said, the closest you can come to ever giving legal advice is if you accidentally start putting things in special provisions that changes, um. Their rights, so if you, if it's not just factual statements, but gradually going we want this to happen, or we get our earnest money back when we get terminated the contract for this many days, whatever, that's just you adding stuff to the contract. You're not allowed to do that, cause you don't, you can't practice law, so you'd actually have to advise them to consult an attorney if, uh, you wanna define stuff that like, not define stuff that, but, uh, put in legal remedies or whatever, um. Another thing that you can get caught for, I know Justin said he got caught for this a, a lot, is using legal wording, um. Legal language is its own language and you cannot use legal language also. Stuff like time is of the essence, that is a legal language, you cannot put in special provisions. We wanna know if we can put in a pool and also time is of the essence for you to give us that information, that's you practicing law, cause you're using legal language in that, um. So just don't, you don't wanna throw anything, you wanna be careful you're not using legal language when you say like, time is of the essence or whatever. So just don't, you don't want to throw anything, you want to be careful you're not using legal language when you say like, time is of the essence or whatever. Probably get to know what the seller is wanting to, like, because this is stuff that you can't. This is one of the few times that there are, it's not negotiable who pays for what. Like I said, a lot of times like the title policy, you can kind of pick who pays for that and it's negotiable. But the seller will always pay for stuff like the, um, recording fees. Prepayment penalties, um. Tax statements or certificates, preparation of deed, stuff like that, um. I don't know, tax statements and certificates, kind of like, people don't realize that, but if they want to get a tax statement. It's the seller's pay for it because it's still his property, um. Same with like, recording fees from title. It's the seller who's choosing to sell their house, yes, you're putting in a purchase contract to purchase it, you're, you're putting in the option to purchase it. But the seller did not have to sell it, so it's kind of his job to. If he has to pay prepayment penalties to his mortgage or whatever. Or, uh, recording fees or something like that, it's the seller's job, so you have a tax certificate and, um, statements. Uh, or a preparation of deed, it's because it's the seller who's preparing the deed, he chose to sell a property, he chose to prepare the deed, so it's his job to, or it's his. Cost that he has to pull it up and get that stuff set up. Let's see. Anything else? Any other form I can think of that I need to go through? Does anybody have any questions about anything particularly we talked about or whatever, because I think I've covered. Kind of everything on the contract, I think I think of, um. If there's any questions, let me know.
As far as the exam goes for next week, are we gonna have to know like. Paragraph one, what does it have, paragraph seven, does it include this?
Not particular, I mean, it's not gonna like go through each paragraph and ask you.
Yeah.
Um.
But.
There might be par, like. You might get stuff that says like. What's in paragraph three, and it's like the price, the sales price, something like that, um. But it's not gonna go, it's not like you're gonna have to put them all in order or anything, too complicated, you might just get, um. What paragraph deals with the properties of paragraph two, what paragraph deals with, um, like I said, what paragraph deals with the notice of fact due to anyone, like stuff like.
Something familiar with the, the title, right?
Be familiar with it, yes, with the title of it, kind of what's included in it, but you don't have to necessarily know each, um. You don't have to go through and know like. Let's see, um.
Not like the fine, fine print?
Yeah, and you won't, you won't really even know like, and title notices, that's G of paragraph six and then paragraph G two stands for what, like. That sort of stuff you might, we have to know, um, the only thing I think of might be stuff. Like. The residential service contract, because that's just such an important part. That or like the, the seller's disclosure, like that's in seven B. That's the only time I can, this is, I'm even talking about the real estate exam itself. Because stuff like that is very. It's like, even though it's in seven B, whatever, it's a super important part of the contract, um, so like that stuff you might have seen on a real estate exam, but.
Yeah.
For the most part, you're just gonna get like, what's in paragraph three? It's the sales price, or if somebody puts this in the second line in paragraph three. Like they put in third-party financing, whatever. What addendum do they, like stuff like, you might get stuff like that, but you won't get anything super specific, um. But I would advise before you take the test, even if it's just the wonderful family, just scroll through it, look at it and just kind of get an idea of kind of. Remind yourself, twenty-two has the addendum, stuff like that, um, that's probably just a good thing to kind of go through and remind yourself of, but. I wouldn't say you necessarily need to know. Like these paragraphs, like all the ones in the middle that we kind of did that one day, um, you know. Casualty loss and default mediation, stuff that's just like, there's nothing to fill in. That stuff you already know, because there's nothing, it doesn't matter if sixteen is mediation or seventeen is mediation or whatever. That's not an important paragraph, um, it's important because it's in the contract, but. You'll need to know more of the stuff you're gonna be dealing with, which would be more of. Seller's disclosure, paragraph seven, I'd say paragraph one to seven, um. Maybe one to nine, because I mean, literally it's just brokers and sales agent and then the closing date and stuff like that, so probably one to nine, um. Eleven, special provisions, that's probably, you'll see that a lot just because a lot of other things refer to paragraph eleven. And you'll probably get a lot of questions that say like, what can you not put in paragraph eleven? And it's like, you can't just add legal whatever, or what are you allowed to put, and it's like only factual statements, because eleven is special provisions, so that's probably another one you probably shouldn't know. But. If you can know. Like. If you knew one to twelve, because that's the stuff you have to fill in, and you didn't know thirteen to like. Twenty probably, and then you twenty-one, twenty-two and twenty-three. You basically have the contract memorized, because all the middle stuff is just notices that like, you're not gonna have to be, so, that's what I would say as far as that goes. That is. Um. That is a good point, good point. As far as, thinking back to, we were talking about, um. Disclosures of like suicide and stuff like that. Um, the only time you're actually required to disclose, if there was a death on the property, like it's required, is if it's. Because of the property, like if the roof fell in, fell on somebody, because it's. They're buying a house that you know has a cracked roof, that sort of stuff you'd have to disclose, or like if. The property's in a. There's a sinkhole that formed in the backyard and, like, that's something that's due to the property. That stuff you, that stuff you have to, like, you have to disclose because of that, because you're basically warning them like this place is dangerous, um. But as far as like. Suicide or anything like that, but that's not something. That deals with the property, um, but if it was like an accident because of the property, you're basically warning them that be safe. It's kind of what you're doing, so that's something you have to disclose.
So, what if there was like an external force onto the property that killed someone, so like a lightning strike or?
The opposite would have been. That is not due to the condition of the property.
Okay.
It kind of comes down to if it's due to the, like, the, the actual condition of property itself, um. I'm trying to think if that would actually include like flood zones? Because like that's a condition of the property that's in a flood zone, so I would think so, but as far as like.
Yeah. That's a very, very.
Yeah, it's, 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 it's still a weird area, but like as far as like a lightning strike, that can happen anywhere, that's not due to the property.
Yeah.
Um, yeah, it's just an external force, but, um, like I said, if like a wall fell over and crushed somebody. Well. House is probably shit, I bet the foundation messed up, whatever, um, even if they fixed the wall. You're basically warned it, like apparently the foundation's so unstable, the walls could just fall over, so, 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 watch, they fixed that one wall, watch out for the other ones, so like, it's just, you have to kind of. Fireify stuff like that, yeah.
So that would be like gas or something, right, like propane?
Yeah, yeah. Let's see, if, um. Let's, I just thought of this, I can't figure out how to explain, um, oh, if the, um. What is it called, if you have a contingency contract, depending what that actual addendum is called, or you have like. Uh, they're gonna add them for a previous sale of the other property or whatever, um. If you have that. And somebody else puts a contract in that's better and they might accept that, they can. But only if you refuse to waive your contingency and you back out, um. If you waive your contingency. You are still first come, first served. But you have to waive your contingency, if you don't do that, your contract's terminated and it goes to the next, the next contract, um. I remember seeing that, that was very weird because they were talking about, um. They worded it very confusingly, um, I don't think any of the questions on like this exam are like. Super hypotheticals that are weird, but I remember there was like one of the real estate exam that talked about. If this person puts in a contract, this person. Contingent on selling their house to this other person, and then this other person puts in a contract with this person on this or whatever, and it got really convoluted, but basically what it came down to is. If I've got a contract in on Aiden's house, but it's contingent on me selling my house first. So I have the funds to buy his house. And then you put a contract in on Aiden's house, and he likes that contract more. He basically has to tell me, hey, I received another one that I like more than yours. If you waive your contingency, we're still under contract, or if you don't, I'm moving on and filing with this person. That's kind of what it comes down, and then I have like three days to waive that contingency, um, and if I don't. Then my contract's terminated and he's not under contract with you. So that's kind of a weird way that a seller can get out of a situation, uh, or get out of a contract they're in. Uh, is if another contract comes through in a contingency clause. That they like more and then I don't want to waive my contingency, and like Justin said, it's best not to, because you never know what will happen. You don't want to be stuck in a situation where I waive my contingency. And then now I have to, and then that deal falls through, but now I'm still under contract to buy his house and I don't have a contingency clause anymore and I don't have any money for my houses and stuff, so. It's best just to have your client be a little, probably to have them back out of a deal and find another house. It's way better than do that and be in that situation than them having to buy a house with benefits, so. Um. That's the best thing to do in this area. How I said you're allowed to use other forms earlier, you are allowed to use other forms, but you'll see that mostly in, it's like if a. Like builders sometimes have their own forms that they've promulgated through like their own attorney. So if you buy a house from a certain building company, they'll probably have their own form that they want to use instead of like a new home construction form, um. Which sucks, but the best way to deal with that is just you have to notify them. Like you have to notify, um. Your buyer about. Like title and everything and the abstract title, because a lot of their form won't cover that stuff, um. But you have to notify them, and there's like even a. I think it's just called like a notice of, or notice to, like buyer, notice to buyer form or something like that, notice to prospective buyer or something like that. That's the form you would use to notify your buyer if a. Building contract, like some other non-promulgated contract came through, because they don't have all the required notices in here, um. Speaking of notices, we were on, um. They won't have all of this stuff. But you have to give your clients this information somehow, um. And since they don't have this stuff, you'd have to basically give them a notice of title or notice to prospective buyer, um. And it's just basically a form that just has this stuff on it, it's just a promulgated form that's just those notices. That you have to give them because they have to get it, they have to get it in some way.
Question.
Yes.
What were the two notices that you always keep on hand for potential clients or something?
Good one, okay, the, we call it the CPM, or CPN, it's the consumer information notice. Um, and that is the one that has to be displayed in a broker's office or in somewhere, um. If you have a website or a Facebook page or whatever, like if we went to Noble's Realty Group's Facebook page. There is a copy of the C, the consumer information notice on that page. Because you have to display it basically everywhere, um, so the, the CPM or the consumer information notice has to be there. And then the IBS or the information about broker services. Now, the IBS has to be disclosed once you start having like substantial discussions or substantial discussions, um. So if I show Aiden a bunch of houses, I don't need to give him one. But if he wants to put in an offer and he starts talking seriously about what he thinks they would offer, or what they, what he thinks they'd take and blah, blah. That's when I have to give him the IBS form. But the CPM, I have to give him any time, because even if I show him one house, we don't talk a lot. But he needs to write a complaint about me because it's something I did at that one property. He has to know where to go to do that. So the C, the CPM or the CN has to be disclosed basically everywhere, that's why it's required, if you. On that shelf when you walk in our door here in the office, that little shelf in the corner just to the right of the door. That has a copy of the, of the consumer information notice on there, because we have to dispose it somewhere in the office or display it somewhere in the office. Man, that's a really good question. Um. I'm wondering if I pulled that up. I'm gonna see if I can get it. Okay. Sorry guys, I'm kind of jumping back and forth, um. For the. Seller financing addendum, um, thinking back to the prices, uh, I guess this is another contract. Same thing there, but, but, um. Remember that seller financing is when you are basically getting a finance, or you're getting a loan from the seller. Loan assumption is when you're taking over the seller's loan. And third party, you're using a different, you're using a third party, you're using somebody who's not involved in the contract at all to get your loan, that'd be a lender, um. With seller financing, remember that you have to still give them credit approval, it's just not as, it's. It's not the same, they don't have the same formula, so with the third-party financing, you give them a credit score, or you give them. They will find your, um, income, your credit score, all that sort of stuff, and then your assets and base that to give you a percentage. You, your mortgage is gonna be at what percentage, um, I had a client who. At first, they were like working to qualify, but they had plenty of assets, it's just the credit score wasn't good, and then they worked the credit score up for they. They qualified for it and they could get a loan, but then. Me, them and the lender were kind of talking and. Figured out that if they actually worked their credit score up a little bit more, which is easy for them, because again, they have plenty of assets, it's just the credit score wasn't good, but he was like, if you listen to me and you pay off this, this and this. I can raise the credit score up a little bit more and that'll lower your interest rate and you can get a better. Your finance will be better, your monthly payment, well, actually I think they said it was going down by like three hundred dollars per month just by having waiting another two months. To improve their credit score, um. Seller financing will not have that, basically you give them, um. Your credit documentation, everything like that, um. If you don't, the seller has three days to basically, not three, sorry, if you don't, the seller has seven days to terminate the contract because you haven't given them credit approval, um. But if you do give it to them, that doesn't change what the percentage is, if they say seven percent or eight percent, like I think Aiden said the average around town is seven percent for seller financing. Uh, which is much higher than the, um, third-party financing. If. They chose seven percent, even if you have it, if you have eight hundred credit score or if you have a six fifty credit score. And both of them qualify, it's not gonna change your, your interest rate at all, it's still gonna be whatever they said, seven percent, that's why. Third-party financing usually looks better is because it kind of, it could change depending on how much you, or how. Good your finances are, whereas seller financing, intended is accepted or not accepted, um. But you have to deliver them that information, and if you don't, they basically have seven days to like, back out of the contract, um. The seller does, because you didn't, you, you haven't proved your creditworthiness to them and everyone's giving you a loan, so it's a little different than third-party financing in that way. How I was talking about, um. You can. Purchase a house and then sell it for more money or flipping, that is allowed if you purchase it in cash for, like how we put here, two fifty, um, at two fifty.
Or if you like agree with the loan.
Yeah, or, yeah, if you agree with the lender and anything like that, however, you cannot do this. Like. If I was to buy a house, and let's say I purchased it. At one fifty. It was appraised around that, I went ahead and purchased it at one fifty. I might be able to sell it at one ninety or two hundred, because. I might be able to sell it at one ninety or two hundred, because I flipped it, I might have fixed it up a little bit, you know, whatever, made some improvements to it, I can sell it for what it's appraised at. I cannot however, take this hundred fifty thousand dollar house and then get it appraised for a million dollars because I know a friend who's an appraiser. And they decided, yeah, million dollars, you can do it. And then I sell that house for a million. So.
I got it, I got a story.
Yes.
Not that much of a story, but I saw one of Twitch Amanda Gaines' flips on Realtor and it was sold for millions of dollars. And it was like that one shot going home, that was super small, like one bed, one bath, there's no way. So. Kind of like that, but also it was on TV, so.
Yeah, yeah, so like, you can, you can flip it, and if people like it, I mean, you're allowed to do it, you just can't use like false appraisals for it. You can't have a friend that's an appraiser and like how Adam Justin there was talking about like, if I'm doing a deal with him, he knows an appraiser, he'll slip her some money, and then he knows an inspector that can be like, ah, that's good, he'll slip him some money, and then suddenly we're all walking away with a, the big paycheck or whatever. Um. You can flip houses, and again, if some people, it might be appraised more because they used it, because they flipped it, and people just in the same with like, if you think about like shoes, if somebody, if they're Jordans, they might not be worth more technically, but they can be appraised for more because they're Jordans in the first place. Like, same sort of thing can happen with houses where the appraisal might actually be higher because of the chip in Joanna Gaines. So when they think about how much is this house worth, it might be higher than what it should be, but that's because that's what will, people are willing to pay for it, and they know that's what people are willing to pay for it. Um, you can't just take your crap house, put some new flooring in it and call it a million dollar house. Because nobody's willing to pay that. So that's why you can't have fake, false appraisals. Um. But you can have a name attached to it that might help. So that's what that would be. I never thought of that, of like,
Oh, I thought it was so funny.
Once you get, yeah, I never thought about like, once you get like popular, you can just sell your houses for more and more and more and more, because people would be willing to pay it because of plenty of the stuff.
Yeah. Pretty sure they spent like one eighty, something like really, really low.
Yeah.
Because of how small the house was.
That's so crazy.
Yeah. I think I also saw like the warm one at some point on there for obviously even more.
Even more, that's ridiculous.
But yeah, it's just like, it didn't wake it, so all the houses are like really low and then there's theirs.
That's so, that's so, that's so crazy.
Well, it's true.
Yeah, yeah.
And the neighborhoods, they usually have their flips in or also pretty low because they buy it low price.
Yeah. Yes.
But then it just shoots after it.
Yeah, it's so crazy.
But congrats, you did seven, seven thirty.
I did, yeah, that's fair. Um. Let's see, before we leave, just kind of double check what kind of day else can be. Um.
Have we figured out a day that we're gonna take the exam?
I was kind of gonna talk with y'all about that, if y'all could think of anything else. Um. I don't know if Thursday evening worked for most of y'all last time, if y'all would be willing to do that again, and then I can just find another time for the people who it didn't work out for, or people who wanted something different. Um, it'd probably have to be on the same day, um, either that or maybe the next morning, just so like there's no I don't know, trying to find a way to do it without there being like a two-day gap, so everybody can figure out the answers to it from one person or whatever. Um. But like my thought was either doing one that'll end right before class and then starting right after class, or something like that. Um. But that's what I was gonna ask y'all about, to see if y'all wanted to see if y'all could do one. Maybe Thursday, um, if you have two hours, start it at three, three-thirty, and then do the test, have class, and then we can do the test right after class on Thursday at uh, seven thirty, and that can go from seven thirty to eleven or whatever. Um, super long, super long test. So. If that works for y'all, that's kind of what I would like to do, just to make it a little bit easier for everybody, but if y'all have any other ideas, let me know.
I like that.
Y'all like that idea?
Yeah, I like that.
Okay.
Did you receive that?
Yeah, so.
If you don't mind.
Yeah, no problem. Um, I'm gonna try to have a test Thursday afternoon, so around three or so, that way we can have the test and then have class right after it. And I'll just mark off like who's taking the test then, and then whoever is not taking the test before class, we'll have a test right after class at seven thirty or seven forty-five whenever we get around to it. And that'll be when um everybody else has to take the test, and you have to take it on that day at one of those two times. Um. I figured if everybody made it last time on Thursday, you could make it again, but just if you didn't like that time or could, wanted to do some whole different, there's another option for you. Um, I know like I kind of hated taking it.
Oh, I really did.
So late. Um.
It was awful.
I totally understand that. I'm a person that I would, I'm a night person, I stay up till like three AM, so like I could totally take a test at nine and be totally cool with it, but I know I'll go wrong like that. So, um. Yeah, so I'll probably try to have one Thursday at three thirty or three. I'll kind of give y'all a better time next week during class, when I kind of finalize how long it's gonna take and when I should actually start it. Um, but probably around three. And then do another one at seven forty-five or whatever, right after class. So. That is my plan.
Thank you.
Yeah, no problem. All right. Is that what everybody, I think we kind of covered as much as I can. There's not much else to improve, so, um. And I spent two hours covering it, so hopefully I covered enough. Um. But if y'all have any other questions before the test, feel free to let me know. I'm not gonna be here during class, starting Monday, Aiden's gonna be teaching and Stefan's gonna be kind of working the computer. Um, and I'm gonna be a vacation. Um. Yeah, chilling and, and on the beaches, I don't know. I'll be around town, it's not gonna be in class. Um, so if y'all have any questions, you can always text me. Um, I know I'm trying to get with some of the students who took the class last time, because since the contracts have changed, there was, everybody who took the test or took the class in, I guess it was January, like beginning of January, when the class happened. Everybody who took the class at the beginning of January, who then finished up into March and then haven't taken the test yet, they still have to go through the whole, like, I need to teach them all the new contracts, because that's on the test. So. I'm getting with people around town and doing that anyway, so I'll kind of be still doing this. So if y'all have any questions, feel free to let me know. I'll be more than willing to help out and kind of clarify some stuff here and there. Um. But I would advise, like I said, before the test, just open a contract and go through it, maybe open some, if you have some of the old slides open, just kind of scroll through them and just try to memorize some stuff. Um. I don't think there's anything I didn't cover today that I can think of that'll be on the test. So, if y'all have any questions, let me know. Um. And like I said, scroll through a contract or two and just kind of get familiar with them. That'll help you here, that'll help in the real estate exam, that'll help you in all the other classes, because you kind of bounce back and forth through this stuff, and then that'll also help you on the, um, like the actual test and in the job once you finally get to it. So. Other than that, uh, I will see you all Thursday, but starting Monday again, we'll have Aiden here teaching, so he will see you all Monday evening. All right.
See you there.
Bye.
Hi, Vida.
See ya.
Yeah.